And that's not a reflection on the person that's hired. I think the person that's hired, I met her, which is a very nice individual. I'm sure she's going to be fine here and do a fine job. But I'm just saying across the board.
I think right now because this is a new position, like I said, just say $10. And then, you know, because we don't know what it's going to develop into.
And we don't have to give them a raise at all. But that option is always out there, just like we do every year with everybody else.
But, you know.
Well, then it might get sticky because all of a sudden we're giving one person a raise and nobody else. But if we put it in here, then in 90 days they're getting a raise. That's just part of the contractors, I think. I think I'd be more comfortable with that.
What?
With actually putting it in here that in 90 days or six months they get a dollar. Then rather than when it comes time to look at everybody and see if everybody's getting a raise and we only give this person a raise and nobody else at that time. So 90 days, $11 an hour. That's kind of what I'm thinking. And then they wait for the raise like everybody else. Then who knows when it'll come. What's lit night? Janette, how long have you been here?
Twelve years.
Twelve years? Everybody knows whatever hour it is, ready?
What?
Not to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to show what the... It's up to you if you want to disclose it tonight.
And then if you also look at the people that we are looking at, have bachelor's degrees and associate degrees in accounting. I'm just...I'm not here to argue. Everyone here, everyone at the township...
No, I'm not arguing. I think it's debatable. Everybody's underpaid. But it'd be a whole issue when we have someone here that's been here 12 years doing not one department but multiple departments at $12 an hour, you hire somebody $11 an hour. What message does that send?
Miguel that just left here was doing, wearing multiple hats, certainly not getting paid what she should have been paid. Everybody in here is struggling. Everybody in here knows the reasoning. Doesn't matter to me what you go for. There's enough people out there that, but we're just not going to keep somebody that's very valuable.
That's been said, that's been said time and time again.
Yep.
Time and time again.
So what, what are you saying? We're beating a dead horse here. What do you guys want to do?
I think that's reasonable.
We'll keep your type of position, yeah. Okay, I make a motion that we set the weights for the assistant to treasurer at $10 an hour with a possible raise to $11 after 90 days to be terminated by the treasurer's office.
Support. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Boyd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Retail fraud ordinance.
Mr. Supervisor, would you like me to give a brief presentation?
If you would please, sir.
Yes, thank you. This order, ordinance is presented to the board to enable the township through the sheriff's department to issue criminal violations for retail fraud within the township. Currently, the sheriff's department is able to issue violations under state law. There is retail fraud violation of state law that exists, but no township ordinance. With this type of ordinance, the sheriff will be able to issue those tickets, checking the box on the ticket as a township offense. When it is prosecuted in the district court, it will be prosecuted as a township offense. This ordinance continues it similar to state law as a misdemeanor offense punishable by 93 days in jail and/or up to a $500 fine if a person is found guilty. The ordinance contains definitions of what constitutes retail fraud. It can be anything from obviously what everybody understands to be retail fraud, which is taking items of value from a retail store and trying to leave the store without paying them. That's your textbook definition of retail fraud. But there also is under the retail fraud category of this ordinance, embezzlement if an employee tries to undercharge somebody as long as it's under $200, any type of offense, stealing a shopping cart, for example, and anything of that nature. Taking any property from the store without paying it or any money from the store illegally would fall under the category of retail fraud. As long as it's under $200, it can come under this ordinance and be punished under township ordinances. It provides another option for the sheriff's department to issue tickets under township ordinances and have them prosecuted in that fashion.
One question I did have on this, Steve, was, does it also cover if someone is, someone steals something from, from another person? Not a retail store, not a store, but, you know, say, you know, the kid down the street came and stole, you know, my bike.
It, it does not.
That's not considered retail fraud, then?
It is not. To be retail fraud, it has to be from a retail store.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any way we can cover that stuff or no? That's separate?
The township certainly can. There are a number, as I look through the ordinances, prosecutor from my office looked through the ordinances, noticed a number of areas where the township could, if it desired to, adopt further ordinances to make misdemeanor offenses that currently are only punishable under state law, bring them under the township and give the same option to the townships.
Okay.
If, if the board would like, but yeah, that could be...
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's what I, that's what came to mind when I was reading it, whether it was just from stores or...okay, thanks.
Yes. Is this added onto the fines that are already out there or are we taking some from, say, the sheriff? Taking part of their, what they would get and writing a ticket?
No, we're not, I don't believe we're taking anything from what the sheriffs would be getting. What we're doing is perhaps getting money from the court fines that the state would otherwise get.
So we are taking some of theirs. We're getting a piece of the pie. We're not adding it on to it.
Correct. We're not adding on, yes.
All right, so my question is, because it says less than 200, what about over 200?
When it's over 200, it becomes a high misdemeanor and the township doesn't have authority to punish high misdemeanors or to adopt ordinances that would create a lower penalty for those type of offenses.
I figured it was something like that, but I figured I'd ask the question.
I don't know how all this stuff works, but in order to get this $200 fine, now would we have to go after them?
What, what would happen is, first of all, if the board adopts this ordinance, it is going to want to provide a copy to the sheriff's department to make sure they know that the township has this ordinance in place and that they can issue tickets. If they encounter a retail fraud incident, it will be their decision whether to issue it under township ordinance or state law. They'll have the discretion and it's actually their decision at the beginning of the case whether to issue it under township law or state law. Certainly the township can request that when they have these sort of incidents occurring in the township, that they do issue under township law.
We don't have a lot of stores, but we do have the Myers store and we have, somebody just told me that the 7-Eleven is around that 26 and 94. So I think it's a good idea because we get our piece of the pie because it's basically our shares doing work, so we're paying them. I'll make a motion that we adopt the retail fraud ordinance as presented.
Support. Thank you. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
This needs to be published in the paper before it...
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mid-Month Business Form Revision. This is basically just something I went over with, Janette, we had a one mid-month issue that I, I signed an issue around and I didn't know if anybody had seen it or, or what happened with it. And this is a way also too, if we do give this, if someone decides that they don't like it, think it might be denied on it, sign their name so that the other board members who could be approving this knows that somebody's against it or, or for it at that time. So it just basically gives more disclosure of what takes place and what has happened.
I agree with this change. The only change to the form I'd like to see is on the bottom, it says something like "seat back for explanations."
I'm sorry.
To say "seat back for explanations."
Okay.
Because if, if, if you're denying it, I would think there's a reason you need to say why you're denying it. And so...
I would say that's a person's discretion if they want to give a reason.
Right, but then if the resident FOIA's it, they're going to know that they can flip it over and there should be someone on the back potentially so they can see why.
If they want to.
So I would just like that, that wording put on the bottom.
That's fine.
And my, on the, the top, instead of putting "or denied" at the end, just put "was approved/ denied by a quorum." Because it's just the wording that things would flow better, instead of it being at the end "or denied."
You're talking about the first line?
Right in here, yeah. Just put slash "denied" after "approved."
By "or."
Right.
Well, where are you shaking you on this?
Oh, the first sentence where it says, "The following described item was approved," and then put slash "denied by a quorum of three." And that would be circled which one it was, approved, denied.
Okay.
Because if it says "approved by a quorum, blah, 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 blah," and then it says "or denied."
Or denied.
No, so it's, you know, it just, the way we've had forms before and you just circle. Because our, even our zoning one is written like that where we just, we circle whether it's approved or denied. I mean, that was just my thought, but...
Then you'd have to make the instructions for the third person who's approving to sign or the, or the third person to deny, to circle. Well, all these, these come back to the supervisor's office, correct? They're sposted where they sold. That or supervisor's office could add them up and circle which one it is. Because everybody's going to, or potentially three, at least three people are going to sign it.
Do you have three people on the floor?
Right. Make motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the new form for mid-month business as discussed.
Support. Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? Janette, are you clearing those changes? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Township office portable heater purchase request.
Now, Ron, you got the infrared one out of a, out of a catalog?
Uh, I...
Is this something that you need to be a member of or whatever to get the price or is it...
You do not have to be. With, with membership, you get, I think it's $29 to become a member. With membership, you get money off. Another reason in looking at it, what I, what I discuss, I know somebody that has one. It's a really good unit. And what I looked at before, it well fit underneath the desks or the other ones won't and it is on wheels, so it is movable for the people who want to use it in their office if they need to move it accordingly. You can move it. And I also looked at the amount of room coverage that it had listed. Heats up to an 800 square foot room, so the coverage is definitely there.
And I have, I have a couple of infrared heaters at home and I do hold them, so I don't have a problem with this whatsoever. I just wanted to ask that question.
The other ones are towers. There's no wheels on them. I know they won't fit under desks. The other thing with the cleaning crews coming in, it's easier for them to move the ones on wheels when it comes to vacuuming or cleaning. But I don't care. I mean, board's choice.
Something was mentioned about, you know, maybe Janette had mentioned waiting until next year to do this. Well, the thing is, we don't know when spring is going to sprung and...
The only, the other point I thought she made with that, which was a good point, is if there is a warranty on it for a deemed amount of time, that would be, that would be a smart move to wait if we could. Well, not only that, sometimes during the summer, they go on sale, get cheaper because it's off-season, so if we wait...
Understood, but the offices, when we walk in, are 51 degrees?
It's perfect.
For you.
So you really would like to see it right away?
I think some of those, I think assessing probably would. I have one. I bought myself. It's behind us right now. Karen O. also has her own.
Well, actually, that's not a bad idea because then we can see them and see how they work. See which offices need them.
Just get the one for now and then, then we can wait. If they're, they're really good, they work good, then we can buy them in the fall and have an extent, they extend the warranty then, you know?
There's 10, 10 that are needed.
There's 10 that are needed.
10. There's 10 offices.
Where's the actual price of this? Is it the $152.99? No. So... $78.99 with membership on there. It's at the top over there. If you do not have a membership, they're $79.99. So for the $29 membership, you save, still save quite a bit. Those prices do fluctuate at different times. You know, I've seen them jump up tad, lower tad, a lot of times. And then some of these things are seasonal where you won't see them in the summertime for sale because they are seasonal items. How many offices, Jody, do you think could really use them right now? You said assessing. Is there another one? It's one or two?
Six. Six.
Six right now.
And if Janette wants one, it's seven.
A couple of seven, it must be a good tag, really.
Six right now. I, I bet you the, I bet you Lisa Burford has a freezer put up in there.
Well, sometimes there's free shipping and handling over certain amounts also, so that could be a savings too when I'm on the buy. If you like it? All right, I'll make a motion. You said 10? Jody, make a motion to purchase 10 of the 5,000 BTU infrared heaters from Sportsman's Guide for $71.99. And I make a motion, I add a motion that we pay the membership under the township's name for, what'd you say it was, Ron?
$29.99.
$29.99.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by treasurer Barker. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And just to, I will pay the, myself and let the township use it. I'll pay the membership. I'll pay the $29 membership fee to this, then the township won't have to.
Something you'll use?
I'm sure it would get used. Thank you. Will I be warmer?
Advisory Committee for Policy Manual. I contacted the MTA just because this, the policy manual's just been taken forever and I think it has been anyways. And one of the thing that they recommended, that they see a lot of boards use is an advisory committee. And basically it's one or two board members and one or two employees that gets together, goes over the manual and just makes advisements. That way there's no quorum. We don't have to try and schedule meetings that have to be public meetings. It's just, they, they feel that it's a quicker way to get things done. So I just wanted to throw it out there and see what the rest of the board thought about it.
It's probably a good idea because, like you said, it's advisory and any of us that wouldn't be directly involved could still make suggestions and say, well, I'd like to read like this. If I know you're meeting with two of the employees or Karen and you, I can always say, well, can you look at this section? This is what I think you should look at.
And then the end, it all comes back to this, this board to decide whether we agree on that or not.
Did you ever get that book, Ron, or did that ever come to you?
Yes, it's in the office. They actually recommend using it for lots of things. We could use it for the Parks and Rec. We'd have to look at, at how that works as far as grants, instead of making it a Parks and Rec board, make it a Parks and Rec advisory committee. That way they, the same thing, there's no quorum, it doesn't have to be a public meeting and then it gets brought to the board. So just something that we can look into. They, they recommend using it for a lot of different things.
Thank you. Thank you for calling and getting a, a problem.
And I can actually see both sides of this. But I think it's going to take us too long to hammer it out and having one meeting to, to get through it.
Well, I will tell you this, when, so when we've had those meetings, every issue's going to be, like you said, hammered out. So instead of doing those meetings, it's going to be done here at the board during the meeting, after we've been advised.
Well, once it goes back to, if, if we did this, if it goes back to this committee...
How many issues are we going to address that night as far as changes?
We're not going to at all. The advisory committee's going to. Okay, so then when they bring it back to us or they could, or when they finish a, finish a section, that section could be sent around to the board and we can make changes.
Change comments, yeah.
Or comments or whatever and send it there to the advisory committee.
The big thing is, that makes it legal as the final decision is made here in the board. We can't, we can't, whoever the advisory committee is in whatever project, we can't narrow it down to three things and then as the committee say, this is the one we want to recommend, then it's illegal because we've made a decision. If we see three different ways of doing this, we have to present, or that board, that committee has to present all three ways to the board, correct? Are you familiar with these?
Absolutely. Mr. Supervisor, may I address this?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, what we're talking about is the Open Meetings Act, of course. And when you establish a committee, if the committee is going to be making any sort of policy decisions that are, that are binding or even decisions to recommend something, it is necessary for the committee to then hold an open meeting. If the idea here is to come up with drafts of items and options for the board to consider, then that body is acting not in a decision-making capacity, but in a capacity of presenting materials to the board for decision-making. So I think that's the difference that trustee Boyd is trying to make here and that is absolutely right.
So really, I think if we are going to do this, the big thing is picking who's going to be on that advisory committee. And even if we want to form a board. I suppose we could make a motion to just form a committee and then actually pick the people later. Is that correct?
You can certainly do that, yes.
That's your motion.
Chris, I think it's, it would be a good idea if you were on it because when you're here, you don't have a set office you have to be in. So, and it's hardest for me to be here, so...
Yeah, I can be here like pretty much every morning and do a couple hours with whoever else we pick, whenever they're available and I can work around. If you guys, if the board wanted me to be a part of it, I would be fine with that and I'm available pretty much every day, all day because I work after dark. So I'll make a motion that we form an advisory committee to, we're examining, to finish up the, or to evaluate the policy manual and make recommendations to the board.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Senior Coordinator.
Are we canceling that meeting? Does that have to be officially canceled or...
Because otherwise it's got to be an open. We have to...
What is the purpose of it?
Meeting set up for Wednesday, March 27th. Policy manual is not canceled.
For the record.
That might be a motion.
Want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Senior Coordinator. Last week, myself, trustee Boyd and deputy supervisor, Latimilia, we conducted interviews regarding the senior coordinator position. Total of five interviews over the course of two days. Each person, I believe we gave roughly a little, an hour or so to, with each one of us asking questions. Very impressed with all the candidates. Like everybody did a good, good job. There was two that stuck out very much. I think we were all in agreement of who we narrowed it down to and in the end, I, we all, all agreed, I think, without any reservations that we found the person for our senior center. Trustee Boyd, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to comment on that?
Yeah, the person we picked, there was just a little bit of reservation and I'm talking just a little tiny bit, just because of the fact that she's a coordinator at another senior center. I really truly believe it will not be an issue, just we have to be, we have to make sure that she's very focused here as well, as much as she is at the other one. I mean, that's just really pretty much the only concern that I had and it's not going to be a hard thing to keep track of because like to talk about the interviews, the seniors will let us know if she's not giving them 100%. So I'm not too worried about it. But I, I was very impressed with the lady that we picked.
One of the things that caught my attention and I think she hit the nail on the head with what we were looking for as far as expanding our program, obtaining new members, outreach to the other communities, networking with them too. She made a statement, you know, about taking a trip. You know, if we have a bus that holds 50 people, she doesn't want 20 people on that bus. She wants 50 people on that bus. And things like that, that she said to grow our, our program and to network with the other programs, I, I think she was right, right on point with what she was saying. And I think she had a lot of energy and knows that this is all on her, that she's going to take the ball and run with it and show us results. So I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Janette, to that?
As she's walking up, I just, that's a very good point. I don't think there's going to be a whole lot we're going to have to do with her. I think she's going to walk in and she's just going to step right into the program and that's a good thing. I don't think that Janette's going to be stuck in here as much. She's going to be able to stay and do other duties because I don't, I just don't think she's going to be needed in here as much, hopefully with this, this particular coordinator.
Correct. There was a couple of things that we were concerned about. One was making sure that, because she is from another township and does their senior program, that she kept both funds completely separate and that we get everything that we're paying for. And as long as she does that, that was a great concern. Like I told her, explained to her about the cubicle that we have, where it's set up with a computer and a printer and she could do everything she needs to do right here. And, you know, because she has so much to work with with her budget and with a smart bus and doing trips and they go on Fridays, so that's not a problem. She lives in the other township on Tuesdays, so that's not an issue. It was brought up about possibly having children, her grandchildren, and talking with the supervisor. with the supervisor, he said that was a couple times and it was just an emergency type. And they're older children, they're not little ones, and they sat in another room and did homework. So it wasn't something that he was very concerned about because he doesn't want that either.
Yeah, the residents were called.
Right.
I'm sorry, the other township officials were called to give references.
Yeah. But she's got a lot of energy, and I think she's the type of person that needs to stay very busy. And I think she wants to see the seniors happy, and I think that's her most, her first goal, and keep them occupied, and she'll bring a lot of positive aspects, and then really grow our numbers. She gave us a couple of ideas of what she's done at another township, and it will work here too. So...
She is a New Haven resident also. She's a resident from another area, worked here a very long time, doesn't plan to go anywhere. That was my other concern, getting somebody trained and losing them again. But she doesn't need any training, and I don't think we have to worry about her going anywhere.
And she's a resident.
Yes.
Do we have a name for this lady?
Luann Kendall. Luann Kendall.
Yeah, she doesn't know that she's being offered the position.
Kendall or Candle?
Candle. K-A-N-D-E-L-L.
And this is at $10 an hour?
Correct.
Same amount of hours?
Yeah, nothing's changed. Same, I told her, you know, she can fluctuate her hours from one week to another, as long as she doesn't go over the 40 hours in that month. And, because she gets paid once a month.
If you, do you have your copy?
She's fine.
If anybody wants to see it happen, that's real good also.
Same.
Ever?
Yeah, I believe you told her about the job. She said, I think it was you that told her about the job.
I actually talked to her at length at one of the county meetings that I was at.
Very tough decision. There was another individual, they were neck and neck.
Our first interview, we were determined that that was our lady, and by the time this one came out forth, what I think, now we hit a real issue.
They were all, they were all very good.
Very good. Do we need to make a motion? I'll make a motion to hire Luann Kendall as the senior coordinator at $10 an hour for 40 hours a month.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. We will make an effort to contact her. Probably too late tonight, contact her tomorrow, and let her know if she'd still like the position. Thank you, Janette. Public comments. Are there any public comments at this time? No public comment? At that time, we're going to close session, we need a motion, please?
I make a motion that we go into closed session at 10:07 PM.
Support.
Mr. Supervisor, if I could suggest an amendment to the motion, it needs to state that it's regarding pending litigation and privileged attorney-client information.
Thank you very much.
Is it necessary to have a part that mentioned in the motion? I'm sorry.
I don't know if I can get it done with the...
Clerk Keith?
You want me to do it again?
Yes.
I make a motion that we go into closed session for pending litigation and privileged attorney-client information at 10:08 PM.
Support. Thank you very much. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion?
We order a pizza.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Close session, 10:08.
Then we go back into open session at 11:08.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Open session, 11:08.
Mr. Supervisor? Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. One of the matters that I discussed with the township board in closed session related to the case of Lennox Township versus Manchick, and with respect to that matter, I'd like to ask the board to consider a motion to authorize me to enter into the Second Amendment to consent judgment that has been negotiated in this matter and have that entered with the Circuit Court.
Thank you, sir. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchie. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes.
Mr. Supervisor, one of the other matters was a legal opinion, a confidential and privileged legal opinion and advice letter that I wrote to the board concerning a code enforcement matter in the township. It was a matter involving Mr. Pachnick, who has been present at prior township board meetings, to preserve the privilege, the attorney-client privilege. I cannot go into the contents of that legal opinion. However, I would ask the board to consider a motion authorizing me to provide Mr. Pachnick with a final notice of violation and opportunity to correct the matters, the violations on his property, providing him 30 days' notice that if he fails to comply, the township will proceed with Circuit Court action.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes.
Is this one you would like me to...
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. The last item related to legal advice I've also provided to the board concerning options in terms of penalties in connection with violations of its blank ordinance and several other ordinances in the township, and also updates to ordinances in the township. And what I'd like to ask the board for is a motion to authorize me to proceed with, first of all, identifying a list of ordinances that would be reasonable to consider for adoption of civil infraction penalties in connection with, and also a review of existing township ordinances to identify ordinances that I believe could benefit from being updated based upon changes in the law and other developments in the law that have occurred over the past many years.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Attorney Joppick. Good job.
I make a motion to adjourn at 11:10. Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion passes. Motion adjourned.